Good evening. Welcome to the February 26, 2024, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I will call this meeting to order and I will ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
All right. First up tonight, we have a very exciting presentation. I think we have six students. Do we have six students here tonight? With Ms. Pendred's class. Their class at Highland Park Elementary here in Stillwater worked to develop a Stillwater travel guide for kids, which I think is just fantastic. It's been really great. I had a chance to sit down and talk to them. I think Vice Mayor had a chance to sit down and talk to them. I don't know. I think lots of people did. And city attorneys had to talk to them about it. So, really appreciate the work that they did on this project. Looking forward to hearing more about it. Also want to make sure we thank Visit Stillwater, Kristi Morrison and her team for the work that they did to help with this project as well. Do we have a presentation? Thank you guys for being here. Good to see you all again.
Good to see you too.
Good to see you too.
Good to see you.
Right here.
If you'd pull that microphone down so everybody can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor Joyce and City Council. Our names are Mylanaman, Lola Austin, Cagle Graves, Liam Houston, and Bella Rodriguez and Isabella Brown. We are representing Highland Park Elementary's 5th grade gifted and talented class. We appreciate the chance to present to you this evening. Our class worked with Visit Stillwater to create a guide to our city. It is the first guide in Stillwater that is created for kids and by kids.
We started our project by writing business, by writing two business owners around town. We visited each location to experience it for ourselves. Once we returned to class, we were able to write reviews about each location. We worked as a team to choose photos, write reviews, and complete each page of the guide.
We've checked out, we've checked out the Stillwater Visit Center, the Printing Center, during our project. We were able to work with many different professionals, including Ms. Christie Morrison, Ms. Nicole Horn, and Mr. Tom Luerbrick. We've been visited by local experts and learned all of the steps involved in getting a piece finalized and through the printing process.
We are grateful to have this opportunity to show others what wonderful things Stillwater has to offer children and families. It is important to us that Visit Stillwater puts so much confidence into our abilities to pull off a professional piece of work.
We believe in our abilities and appreciate adults who do the same. We hope you have a great evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you guys so much. Yeah, let's, if you guys could join me over here by the flags, we'll take a quick picture. I just want to make sure everybody knows these are available. Kristi, out at the Visit Stillwater office. And I really want to read the title on the front. It's "For Kids By Kids: Stillwater Where The Waters Are Chill, Where The Waters Are Still And The People Are Chill." guy. Because it is, I mean, it's honestly really cool. Such a cool project. I love that they went and visited all these places and wrote firsthand accounts about them. Just a really, really cool project.
And invited us to visit with them. That was a lot of fun.
And honestly, sitting down with that class was one of the most, like, well-prepared, thoughtful. Like, they asked tough questions. They were very, they were very engaged and involved in the project, so.
They asked me if I wanted to be the mayor.
Do you?
Easy answer. No.
We could trade spots.
I asked the one just a minute ago where I can find going, using this. I said, "You can get to the hideaway." Like, "All right, this is cool."
All right, well, we will move on now to Item 4 on the agenda, which is the Consent Docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the Consent Docket? Before you do anything, I am actually going to ask to remove Item E.
Motion to approve the Consent Docket minus Item E.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket minus Item E. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Consent Docket minus Item E is approved. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment on items not public hearing? I don't think we do. So we'll move to items removed from the Consent Docket. Item E is the approval of the air service agreement with American Airlines. And Kristi Cluck is going to come up. I've got just a couple of questions I wanted to address on this. This is renewal of our minimum revenue guarantee with the airline, which we, in the past, have, we signed with American and then we've worked with the university to help partner with us. I think with our university commitment right now, we're still working through that part of it.
That is correct.
Okay. And we'll continue to work through that partnership. They've been great partners in the airport and I'm sure we'll get to a point where that, that works out. The other question I have is just that I know we haven't really had to spend our minimum revenue guarantee, right? This is the money that if they don't sell enough seats, we have to try to help make it whole, but we haven't had to do that. We've had good numbers on, on the prior flights, but with their bigger planes now, they're concerned about those numbers again. So how much money do we actually have that we've budgeted previously that we actually haven't spent on this?
Right. From the last MRG, which spanned two years, we have about $1.3 million that's setting aside.
Okay.
And we've continued to carry that forward in an account. We have discussed the use of those funds towards the terminal funding. And so that's, that's an option on the table for those dollars.
Lots of stuff out there we could spend money on.
Correct.
But we do have some of that money that we hadn't spent on the MRG to this point that if we need to use it for this one, we can. Okay. That's all I wanted to address.
I had one question. This, so looking at this, it seems like these dollars are a significant increase. Am I, am I reading this? I mean, it was kind of hard to parse out because I think what we've had in the past is X percent ridership. If we had X percent ridership, then we, we were good.
It wasn't based on load factor. It was, it was, the language in the agreement didn't change substantially.
Okay.
So our annual minimum revenue guarantee in the previous agreement was $2 million. And that, yeah, that's over a 12-month period for two years, so total of $4 million. This agreement is $2.6 million per year.
Thank you.
Then, the language of how that gets paid out and all that kind of stuff doesn't change a lot.
That doesn't change. It's a calculation and it's based on the cost per flight. And so that is probably the biggest component that's changed in that calculation. It went from, I actually have those numbers. Under the last agreement, it was $4,222 per flight, and it has gone up to $6,946 per flight.
Because of the bigger plane?
Bigger plane and increased costs in general for American. A lot has changed since we signed that agreement, the last agreement with them. And so it's a combination of, of the, yeah.
So we need to continue our efforts to make sure people know that flying out of Stillwater is a fantastic option for them.
That's correct. The key is going to be to get our, our load factor up and get more people flying. And I will say Kelly Reed, our airport director, has already started down that path. We now have a full-time, full-time marketing position out at the airport to focus on this exact thing. She's already been in meetings with Visit Stillwater and with some other communities to raise awareness. And so there are efforts already underway.
Have we done the calculations in terms of what our average load factor has been versus what it needs to be? How much it needs to increase so that we wouldn't have to end up paying extra?
So our load factor average is about 70%. We have a goal to get it up to at least 76%, if not 80%. And I'm not going to say that that guarantees, that fixes the problem, but it's a really good step in that direction.
And what, 10% of that plane is like four or five seats? Five and a half seats a flight?
Yes.
Right? So I mean, getting that load factor up is getting a few more people to book that flight on a regular basis.
Yes.
I was just on that flight. The bigger plane gives us space for carry-on bags, which is a great bonus. I sat next to a woman that was from Ponca City and was saying just how awesome she thought it was to be able to fly into Stillwater, so.
Yeah, we just need to get that, continue to get that message out.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot of folks that don't realize now that there's more space on the plane. You can, you don't have to, you know, leave all your bags because there was zero space to put. I can stand up on the plane now, which is nice. So there's a lot of additional benefit now that we've, we've got those planes, so. We'll keep spreading the word.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kristi. I'll go ahead and move that we approve Item E from the Consent Docket.
Second.
Oh, waiting for someone else to say vote on this. We have a motion and a second to approve Item E. Please vote.
Sorry, I thought you was losing.
So, I did. It's a vote, with a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. Item 7 is General Orders: Presentation of the Rural Fire Fee Analysis by New Gen Strategies and Solutions. No action will be taken on this item. This is an informational presentation by Fire Chief Essery.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counselors, good evening. I'm Terry Essery. I'm your Fire Chief. And as you all know, we have a rural fire subscription program. And for $100 for the calendar year, any fire event that you have on your property, if you live outside the city limits, is capped at $2,000. The current rates in the fee structure that we're using was put in place in 2008. And with the increases in essentially all costs, personnel, equipment, you name it, we felt like it was a good time to reexamine what we're charging, benchmark, benchmark it against what others are charging, and see if some adjustments need to be made and what those adjustments might be. So in December of 2022, we reached out to Dave Yonkey and his team, and they started working on an in-depth study of, of our rural fire billing process. And tonight, Dave is going to present that to you guys, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dave Yonkey this time.
Again, for the record, my name's Dave Yonkey, President of New Gen Strategies and Solutions. Trying to look for the full screen. Oh, there it is. Thanks. Okay. Apologize for that. So, this is going to be about it. I'll keep a relatively short 12- to 15-minute presentation. You should have all received a copy of the report. Basically, the agenda, I'm going to walk through specifically what our scope of services was, the financial analysis that we conducted, some proposed rate changes we would recommend to you. And then also, we looked at some of your call analysis and also did benchmarking, which I thought was pretty informative. And then based on that, we have a series of findings and recommendations. Again, I want to emphasize, this is strictly informational only. There were a couple things here that, you know, these are our recommendations, but from a policy standpoint or from a legal standpoint, deciding what you do ultimately is up to you folks. So first of all, the purpose of the study was to conduct a comprehensive financial analysis to look at your current hourly rates that are charged for equipment and personnel, and whether those rates are sufficient. As Terry mentioned, it's been about 15 years, so I can guarantee you they're not sufficient before we do any analysis. Secondly, we wanted to show you the financial impact of how customers in the rural area are billed for fire service and some things that potentially could be done to incentivize having a membership. We'll talk about the call type analysis and then the benchmarking again, which I think is informative and consistent with some of our analysis and recommendations. So the, the information here, these are the basic fees that you charge. So if you have a rural fire membership, you pay an annual fee of $100 per year, okay? The minimum charge is $500. So if someone comes out in a vehicle that's billed at $50 an hour and it's one person and the bill's $250 at the stated hourly rates, you still pay a minimum of 500. The incentive for having the, the subscription is that the max charge is $2,000. So if you don't have a membership and you have the fire department called to your rural property, it's a major fire or what have you, you can definitely exceed that $2,000. The rates on the right side are the current rates that are charged for personnel and equipment. So for instance, if you're rolling a hazardous material unit, it's $650 an hour. And talking with Terry, a lot of their calls, you know, they'll look at them, they're like two-hour calls, four-hour calls. So if you had a two-hour call, again, I'll go through some examples, you'd be charged $1,300 for that piece of equipment, plus the hourly rate for whatever people went with it. Okay. I only have three very simple slides regarding the financial analysis. This will not be anything like the Water and Waste Water Cost Service Study, so I want... So first of all, why are we even looking at this? The fire service is budgeted in the general fund, okay? So that's paid for by sales tax revenue. Your rural customers, depending where they live, they may or may not contribute to your sales tax revenue or at a lesser amount, depending where they shop, et cetera. So, you know, you want to have some recovery of this cost. And to the extent possible, you want to minimize any potential subsidy by the citizens of Stillwater. So I'm going to have three basic slides here I just want to walk through. This first one is the membership cost. Right now, you are currently charging $100 per year. We would recommend that that be increased to $125 for the residential rate. This analysis, I want to emphasize, where we've gone from a member count of 1,000 to 2,000, that is strictly hypothetical, okay? This is, you know, hypothetical, hypothetical example. One of the things we are going to recommend are some incentives so that people want to have a membership if you live in the rural area. Rough estimate, you have 1,000 folks in the rural area that have memberships. Approximately little over 4,000 customers are out there, so, or potential customers, so you're getting about 25% of the market. With that said, if there's a fire, you're responding to all those and then you bill them either way. So we're running this example of if you're able to incentivize to increase the membership count and increase the annual fee for a residential account. The bottom line is the revenue that you generate when you go, when there is a call and you bill someone, whether they are a member or not, you're generating $25,000 or so a year. Not, not a lot of money. If you increase the rates, we ran those same examples, it'd be about 35 grand a year. One of the key things we are recommending you consider is a potential charge for EMS services. Again, there are some, I want to emphasize, things from a legal standpoint. I don't want to speak for legal counsel on this. I, I think it's worth something, considering it. The reason being, in the past year, you had 92 EMS calls where you went out into the county. Now, LifeNet handles those calls, so EMS is only there for support. And they'll help some, but primarily it's LifeNet providing the service. Our view of it, and this is an example, again, talking with Terry about, you know, if you're rolling with a staff vehicle, right now it's $25 an hour. We'd recommend the fee be increased to $35. Line personnel, their hourly rates would go from $28 to $45. Company officer from 30 to 53. You can see the cost of that would be $265 for that, rolling on that call. The minimum you charge is $500. So the point is, if those 92 calls were billed, that's potentially, you know, at the $500 minimum that you do, it's about another $45,000, $46,000. Again, from a legal standpoint, that's something that has to be checked. Our big argument or logic for it is if you roll those folks, they're there, they're not in the city, they're not available for something if it occurs in the city. So those people are not available.
Probably not a question for you, but maybe for Terry, but why do we roll fire trucks when someone calls for an ambulance? Why would we? I mean, I know we do it for a reason.
No, that's, that's a great question. And the reason for that is, is we only respond to priority ones and priority twos. So essentially, if there's a life threat or a threat to limb, and the purpose of that is, is to bring the emergency room team to the patient so they can have the best outcome. It, it's just really trying to set them up for success, not just to survive, but to actually be discharged and go back to normal life. So it, for example, when you go to the emergency room, you have a team of doctors, nurses. It's not just two people taking care of you, it's a team of people taking care of you. And we try to bring that same approach to you in your home or on the street or wherever it is. And again, it's just for trying to get the best outcome for the patient.
So we, we do that based on when a 911 call comes in?
Correct.
Based on what's assessed as the priority of that?
Based off the dispatch information, yes.
Okay. And, and so last year, we sent a fire truck out on 92 calls outside the city?
And when we go outside the city limits, typically, we'll send them in more of a SUV-type vehicle.
Okay.
So it won't necessarily be a fire truck. We tried not to for various reasons. But if that vehicle's not available and it is a life threat, then we would send an engine at that time. But typically, it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that, that was one of the key points I wanted to mention. Just the third, and again, from a potential incentive standpoint, one of the things we would recommend is that you offer an incentive for having a membership. So if you're paying that membership fee, well, again, I'm recommending $125, that if there is a call, the first call that fire rolls to your home or what have you, there's a $250 discount. And you'll see some other cities do that for their rural areas. Again, it creates an incentive, because right now, they roll, I pay, if I'm a member and you roll and it's $265, I still pay $500. If my next-door neighbor is, doesn't have a membership, gets the same call, he's paying, he or she are paying $500. So there's not an incentive to me as a member from that standpoint to have it. So by offering a discount on that first call, it's something we'd recommend for fire. And if you were to do an EMS call, if you were to bill for it, to offer a discount of $150. That does reduce some of the revenue, you would realize. So what we've done there is you're getting that revenue in, in the memberships, and your rates have gone up, but you are offering that discount. We calculated, based on the number of calls that you received, about 23% of the calls from out in the county where you were able to bill were members. The remaining 77% were not. So we calculated you do this discount. So bottom line, if you increase the membership fee, if you're able to increase your count to 2,000, which would be about 50%, and we understand that's an estimate here, and if you were charging for the EMS calls, less that discount, you could see your revenues would go from about 125 to potentially 323,000. That's as deep as the numbers go here. Any questions? Again, I'll say right away, we're making an assumption on that membership count going from 1,000 to 2,000.
So you said the first call, is that first call each year that resets?
It's, it's annual. Yes. Okay. So just to, just a few more slides. So what we're recommending are these proposed rates. We went back and looked at all of your rolling stock. We looked at the purchase price, the useful life, what it came out to on an hourly basis. Had discussions with Terry. So if you look at this, the only unit that's not increasing is the hazardous material unit. It's currently at $650 per year. We'd recommend, based on the cost, how it's used, and hourly rates, that it stays there. Your ladder truck is one of your most expensive pieces of equipment. You heard him say, you know, that you're not going to roll that out in the county unless it's something major. But you can see that rate would go up significantly from 550 to $1,000. You can see the other equipment increasing as well. So pretty straightforward. And again, how that works is if they roll, again, whether you're a member or not, the clock starts and the bill is calculated on these hourly rates for equipment and personnel. So if they're out there for two hours, whatever equipment at two hours times the rate, and the personnel at their various rates. So pretty straightforward. Key thing we would recommend or emphasize on the personnel, we did add benefits and educational training, so it's not just salary, it's salary and benefits. And that's one of the reasons you see those rates. Again, you're going back to 2008. Your line personnel go from $28 an hour to a fully loaded $45 an hour. And again, we're recommending these be phased in, all these rates be phased in over three years, FY '24, '25, '26. This, I'm just going to do a couple examples real quick. So this shows a two-hour call where if you roll one engine for two hours, if you're looking at the second and third columns, you roll one engine for two hours, you have another staff vehicle for two hours, you have three line personnel, and then one company officer. You can see at current rates, it's $978. And again, whether you have a membership or you don't have a membership, you'd pay the same amount. So again, not an incentive. Again, you can see the rate will go up significantly as we adjust those hourly rates. If you're taking more major fire or response, here you can see that you've rolled one engine for four hours, one brush unit for four hours, one battalion chief vehicle for four hours, staff, two staff vehicles, six line personnel, two company officers, and a command officer. Now the total cost is $3,272 at current rates. Now there, under the current system, if I'm a member, I only pay the 2,000, so I save Again, if I'm not a member, then you pay the $32.72. So real quick, call analysis and benchmarking. I think, to me, this was interesting. Of course, I like numbers, but there are 105 different response codes in your fire system. They break down to 10 categories or classifications, okay? The key thing I just want to point out here is if you look, the EMS, and again, this is total for the city. This is calendar year 2022. Bottom line, you've rolled vehicles 4,177 times. Of those 4,200, 392 were in the rural area, so about 9.5%. Okay? But if you look here, EMS is over a third of your calls, which is not surprising really. And then you have good intent, which is 30%, which is not a false alarm, but they roll and then sometimes something happens, they're called, they don't have to respond, so they go back. That's a... That's a significant number. But anyhow, it shows, shows those items there.
Are those good intent rollouts, do they get charged the minimum $500 as well?
They, they, they do not.
Okay.
Only if we actually show up on scene and provide service.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for bringing that up because that addresses my third bullet here with regard to if they roll into the county in the rural area. You do not, as I mentioned, they don't charge for the EMS assist. They do not charge for general cleanup accidents, gas leaks. And we're going to talk about OSU property. There is OSU property out in the county, and they're not, not billed. And then unreported controlled burns. So let's look at the county. So if you look at that, like I said, 392 calls of the 4,177, so 9.4%. Again, if you look up there, good intent and EMS are over 50% of your calls. Although, good intent actually jumps to number one. But, so that's where we got the number for EMS. Again, if you had 92 EMS calls in the county, remember you were charging $500, the minimum. That'd be the $46,000 I talked about, based on the historical number of EMS calls. And just a couple benchmarking. All I want to hit here and emphasize, if you go down and look at a couple of the cities, and you go to Coeida, Oklahoma. Did I said that right? All right, I did that time.
Close enough.
I got corrected before. So they, residential, they are charged $250. They do charge triple that, $750 for commercial. We are going to recommend, and I'll talk about it in a second, a higher rate for commercial out in the county. You can see some of the others. Perkins, Oklahoma's 100 for residential, 200 for commercial. Milan, Tennessee, 100 versus 200, and then West Polaski, Arkansas. So just an example of number of folks that charge a commercial, a higher commercial rate. And again, I'm sorry, this is small, they're testing your eyes. I even have to put my glasses on now. But for SkyTuck, for them, again, this is an example, one fire run per fiscal year at no additional charge. So again, this is an example, they do the first one for free, okay? You hope you don't have two any year, that's a bad year. But then there, they charge a flat $250 an hour. Coeida, Oklahoma, no out-of-pocket expense for the first fire run on EMS. Silom Springs, no additional cost for fire runs. And it's just the way it's written, they said for at least two. And I actually had Carrie in our office asking, can you clarify? And they said, well, it just depends on severity. Sometimes you get one, sometimes you get two, so that's just how they do it. And then Union City, Tennessee, guaranteed $750 call, cost per call. And again, if it's a good intent, like Terry talked about, it's waived. So those are some examples. So last slide, bottom line, what are our recommendations? First of all, we would recommend an increase in those personnel and equipment hourly rates. So all that would do is, over that three-year period, you increase those hourly rates that you bill folks at when there's a call in the rural area. Secondly, we would recommend that the residential membership be increased from 100 to 125, and a commercial membership be implemented of $250. And our thought process on that, depending on the property, depending, you know, if it's a welding shop, a larger facility, if there's chemicals, again, there can be more than just a standard home or mobile home or residential unit that's having a fire. And then we would recommend that you offer a $250 discount on the first call for members. The third bullet, if you were to charge for EMS, we would recommend you offer to members $150 off that EMS call. And then the fourth item, we would recommend some marketing of this program, whether it's through Rural Water Systems, Rural Electric Co-ops, not sure what the county has for the website or what have you, but getting the message out there from a social media standpoint. You also have to think, not everybody has social media. And so you've got to figure out how you get that message out. But from a cost standpoint, it's very affordable. And then finally, and again, this is a policy issue, for outside the city limits where you're rolling equipment to OSU, we would recommend that you consider whether you were to charge a fee for that. And with that, glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Counselors?
Could you go back, oh, you lost your slide already. Could you go back to the slide with the hourly rate and the rate increases?
For equipment and personnel?
For personnel.
Yep, sure. Let me get back there. There you go.
Okay, so the, let's look at line personnel, fiscal year 2024. $45, is that our current cost?
That's the fully loaded. We took, what we did, we took personnel, we looked at your actual salaries. There's a range for those people, you know, based on seniority. We took an average of those, and then we grossed it up 50% for benefits and education per discussion with staff.
Okay, so that's, in essence, that's our current cost?
Yeah.
And then the rest of them are inflated as?
Correct.
As necessary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, so those rate increases are designed, I mean, this is simplistic, but we're either increasing rates because we, we would be increasing rates because we need to cover the cost of the service, or because we're trying to make some extra money?
You're not making money on this.
Yeah.
So.
Just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're not. So it's just to cover the increased salary costs, equipment costs. We continue, I've been on the phone this week with two clients, and again, on, on the solidway side, that are seeing significant increases in garbage truck costs. It's just the metal, the manufacturing, et cetera.
So really, what we're talking about here is the fact that, you know, these calls cost the city money. We're trying to align these, we would be trying to align these rates with recovering the cost that we spend to respond to these folks outside the city limits.
That, that is correct.
Would you say we, if we did this, we would be breaking even on this service, or would we still be?
So, in the perfect world, okay, we have taken the, you know, we've got personnel, and those are their fully loaded hourly rates. So if they go, you're covering those costs. If you have the equipment rolling, they're going. And if you're able to bill those, you would cover those costs. Where you would, in essence, under-recover is to the extent you're offering a discount or you're not able to collect from these folks. But this moves you much closer to a full-cost recovery.
Our, our $100 rate to purchase, to have rural protection, we said that went into effect in 2008?
The current, yes. And I don't remember, counselor, what it was, sorry. I don't recall what it was before 2008, but the current was.
Have the other rates gone up since then? Like, so we've kept, like, the hazardous material unit, the 650, was that in place in 2008 as well?
Yes, correct.
So we haven't raised any of the rate in over, in 15 years, in over 15 years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Terry, one more question. Have, have, have we ever had responses to OSU property in the county?
We do. We have approximately, I believe, OSU, they, they own approximately 65 different properties outside the city limits. And typically, when we respond, it's to help with a controlled burn that became out, uncontrolled. But I don't have those numbers tonight, but I can certainly give them.
That's, in your opinion, that's not a frequent occurrence, though, apparently?
It's not.
Okay.
Further questions? I'm going to take just a second to make a point. Your, your initial slide, Dave, you talked about the fact that we fund our fire department through sales taxes. We don't have a better way to do it. We don't have a, you know, there is no other way to do it in Oklahoma. It's really dumb, for lack of a better word. Because, of course, the point could easily be made that there are people who live technically outside the city limits, who spend way more in, in sales tax in the city of Stillwater than I do, who lives inside the city limits. And it's really silly that that is our way of categorizing how these expenses get. Now, again, not, this has nothing to do with you. I'd just like to make the point that the state of Oklahoma is backwards when it comes to how sales taxes go to fund city services. Because this, I mean, this clearly is something that's based on property ownership, clearly based on something that's based on something other than how much money you spend at Walmart in the city of Stillwater. And so we should, we should not fund it this way, but that's an aside. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that was informational only. I think from a staff perspective, I don't, I mean, we'll see some sort of a proposal in terms of what we should do with this rural fire fee system. I think, well, this, nothing we would do would take effect until calendar year 2025, correct? All right. Well, we look forward to seeing something else from staff on that. Item eight, resolutions. Resolution 2024-5. A resolution authorizing and approving the submission of a fiscal year 2024 Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant, application for multimodal corridor improvements to enhance safety, connectivity, and economic growth in Stillwater.
So this resolution seeks approval from the city council to apply for a RACE grant for fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $2,997,658. The city has identified an eligible project for vital roadway improvements to realign North Airport Industrial Road and construct a roundabout to serve as a gateway to safely address multimodal airport and non-airport traffic, which will support the current expansion of the airport and also other economic growth adjacent to the airport. The RACE grants are awarded on a competitive basis. The local match for this grant, if awarded, would be zero. Grants manager Shelley Crines is here if you have more questions.
I have zero questions. I want us to get grant money. Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2024-5.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. Resolution's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item nine, ordinances on second read. Ordinance 3531, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 6,001 and 6,099 North Perkins Road from small lot, single-family residential district RSS to general industrial district IG. Counselors?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3531.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that ordinance is adopted. Item 10 is appointments to our new Washington School Advisory Committee. While I pull up this report, I just want to say that there was a wonderful event on Saturday night, recognizing the Washington Bears State Championship basketball team of 1956. Almost said eight, 1956. And we're really excited about what's happening with the Washington School Heritage Project. So we had one, two, three, four, five folks submit applications to be appointed to this board. Karen Washington, who would be a representative of the Washington School Alumni Association, James Beckstrom, Dr. Laura Orata, Norman McNichol. Anybody know who that guy is? And Gary Clark. So I will nominate these five folks to serve as our initial representatives on the Washington School Advisory Committee.
Second.
A motion and a second to appoint them to the committee, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, they are appointed to the Washington School Advisory Committee. We thank you so much for those folks and their willingness to serve. All right. Reports from officers and board, and the board. Ms. Carley?
Request for an executive session pursuant to 25 OS Section 307B4 involving confidential communication between the city council and the city attorney concerning pending PFOS litigation and class action settlements with 3M and DuPont, including whether to join the class action settlements. It is the opinion of the city attorney that disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process the claim or conduct, conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you. Ms. Meek?
Please, hello. Please save the date and join us for community meetings to discuss a new Stillwater animal welfare facility. We have two meetings in March, one in person and one online. The meeting in person will be Tuesday, March 26th at 5:30 PM in the dining and event hall at the Stillwater Community Center. The meeting online will be Thursday, March 28th at 5:30 PM. We want to hear your voice and discuss the future of Stillwater's animal welfare collectively. Let's determine what is best for our residents and animals. For more information, please go to stillwaterok.gov/animalwelfare.
March 26th at 5:30. Animal welfare, be there.
March 26th?
March 26th, 5:30 PM. Vice Mayor?
Yes. The annual Trash Off event to help keep Stillwater beautiful will be Saturday, March 30th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Volunteers will meet at the Couch Park Pavilion at 1270 East Alcott Drive. Since work gloves, safety vests, and trash bags will be provided, volunteers are asked to RSVP by March 28th by calling 405-533-8482. This is an opportunity to earn community service hours if needed. Additional information is available online at stillwaterok.gov/trashoff.
There is, in fact, a trophy, or at least in the past, there's been a trophy for the team that collects the most trash.
Yeah.
Let that be an incentive to you. Counselor Hawkins?
Good news, the Convenience Collection Center now takes credit cards. Keeping the city clean has never, has never been this easy. Residents are encouraged to utilize this service by visiting the center at 807 South Perkins Road. Hours of operation are Tuesday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Saturday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and it is closed Sunday and Monday. For a full list of accepted items, along with associated fees, go to stillwaterok.gov/wastemanagement.
Thank you. Counselor Harden?
Yeah, since Counselor Clark is out, I have two of them to read today.
All right, good for you.
Election Day is Tuesday, March 5th. Polls will open 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Voters need to go to their normal polling location to participate. Please note, the new polling location for precinct four that was previously World Harvest is now at Fire Station 3, which is located at 416 East Lakeview Road. This will be a temporary polling location until a permanent site can be acquired. We encourage every registered voter to learn about the candidates, the propositions that affect their home and quality of life within Stillwater and Payne County. For more information for sample ballots, go to votepaynecounty.com or www.elections-ok.gov. And for the second one, if you're looking for an environmentally friendly way to save money on your water bill, you may want to purchase a rain barrel through the city of Stillwater. These barrels capture water from your roof and store it for future use. Using rain barrels also help reduce storm water runoff by minimizing the amount of runoff that leaves a site. Mail-in order forms are due by April 26th, online by, due by April 28th. For more information, visit stillwaterok.gov or email zach, z-a-c-k dot henson, H-E-N-S-O-N, at stillwater.org, or you can call 405-533-8436.
Thank you, Counselor Harden. Not only did you get two because Counselor Clark's gone, but because I think it's your one-year anniversary here on the city council.
It is.
Congratulations.
Or condolences.
Well, I mentioned this a second ago, but I did want to talk a little bit more about the fact that this past Saturday was the Washington School banquet to honor the state basketball team from 1956 and to explore the future of the Washington School project. We want to cultivate relationships and understanding while increasing education, advocacy, and community through this project. I know we're all excited to be part of honoring, honoring the legacy of Washington School and its alumni, and I'm proud that we've now appointed an official committee as we continue to grow this work. As we enter into the last few days of Black History Month, let's ensure that the momentum and progress let's ensure that the momentum and progress continues in all realms of honoring and celebrating the heritage of our Black community here in Stillwater. To follow updates on the Stillwater, on the Washington School project and other city projects, you can go to stillwaterok.gov罡ics. All right. At this time, I will move that we recess the city council prior to item 13.
Second.
A motion and a second to recess city council. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the city council will now be in recess. At this time, I will call to, call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting for February 26, 2024. On the consent docket, we have regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent docket.
A motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket's approved. Under general orders, we have considered a recommendation from the Stillwater Reinvestment Plan Implementation Policy Committee regarding an application by progressive development. Mr. Moore?
Yes. Good evening, trustees. Brady Moore, Deputy City Manager, here to present or to set up the item that is before you, which is the Empire Slice House. The developer is Progressive Development Corp., as you just read, and the address is 116 West 10th Avenue. Some of the quick details on the project, the total hard construction cost for this project is 1.4 million, which brings the total development cost to 2.2 million. The amount of assistance requested by the developer was $450,000. And I'll now invite the developer Cory Williams up to talk to you about the project and answer any questions that you have.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councillors, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm like a bad penny. I just kind of keep turning back up. But it has been a little while, so I try to space it out.
We're just glad you made it this time.
I appreciate that. My apologies for not last time. I haven't left town in so long, I can't hardly remember, but I did leave on the one time that I had something I needed to be here for, so my apologies. I am excited about the project that's before you. You've likely seen the mess that's being made next door to Stone Cloud. And Empire Slice House is, I think, going to be a wonderful addition to the city. I think it'll be a wonderful addition to that 10th Street corridor down there that, I made no secret of it, part of my, my overall goal is to pull downtown further south and to widen it out a little bit so that we don't have such a pencil that we've had previously. I think we've had two blocks of hyper vibrancy and the rest just kind of existed. And so, part of doing that is initially with Stone Cloud, which I'm happy to say has remitted $154,000 in sales tax from a building that was nothing in the mayor and I's lifetime. So that's kind of fun and cool and lets you know that the investments that are being made are coming back to us. As somebody who is intimately involved in remitting sales tax on behalf of Hatch, I can tell you that those checks are also healthy. So, and we're glad to do it. I guess it's probably easier to, to open it up for questions if you have that. She is going to, so she has two concepts in this genre, real quick. Empire Slice House and Empire Slice Shop. Empire Slice Shop is more of a counter-service, small-scale development. And because of what we were able to offer, both for pricing and for where we were going to put it, she went with the Slice House concept, was a full-service restaurant, full bar. And very, very recently, we agreed to terms on her taking that entire yard next door to Stone Cloud. This project has gone through multiple iterations and the lease is still not actually completely inked despite all the construction that's going on over there. And originally, I'd reserved 30 feet, the west 30 foot of that yard for future development and community space. I really wanted to put astroturf out there and have some pop-up domes and different things that, that people could kind of use it for. Stone Cloud is not well situated in the backyard for yoga, so we were going to put a place out there that was flat enough for some yoga. But she has asked to use all of it and we've come to terms on that. So that entire corner will be developed, and the airstream, I'm happy to say, finally has a home. It will be utilized in this project. But there would be a huge outdoor patio space and, and event space and everything like that. I am a little bit late getting this project in front of you. I think I filed it back in December and you may or may not know what was going on for me in December, but I've never had an undertaking where I was on both sides of the transaction like I was for Hatch, nor have I ever had an undertaking that sucked away so much of my time and energy. And so, simply, it was a situation where I'd been before this body with that particular building on a very similar development at one point in time. You might remember I was in front of you on TXMZ, came back in front of you to cancel that project out. The developer and I just were never able to really make that work, a failure to launch situation. And so, there may have been a little bit of assumption on my part that the timing wasn't as relevant as it probably was. So I apologize to the council for that, but glad to stand for questions.
Trustees, questions?
The plan that you submitted in, in the packet, does that include the yard you're talking about?
Partial. You can see that, that picture has a patio coming off at grade. That building is four and a half foot above the center line of the road, so it's substantially above grade on the interior. So that patio comes off on that west side and, and the ramps, and then you can kind of see it where it just kind of disappears into nothingness. That nothingness is the yard.
Okay.
And so, she gave me a sketch last week, actually, that showed that yard completely programmed. We've been talking about it for a while, but until that sketch, I hadn't actually seen what that looked like. But it will now go all the way out to that sidewalk that runs parallel to Husband Street.
Can you share with us what that extension's going to be?
Yeah, so she's got, she's got a little area for cornhole. The ramps and everything still go down to get to grade, and that tree is protected because it's pretty integral for me, actually, and will be, I think, for her patio eventually. The airstream is placed, if I remember correctly, parallel to the sidewalk, and it will, it will service as an outdoor service bar, so you'll be able to get drinks out of it. You don't know the history of that airstream, but those, those who know me know that that airstream is, is a, is a project of mine that's been looking for a home for a little while.
I've seen it mobile around town many times.
Yeah, yeah, I just keep moving it from one vacant structure to the next in the hope that it will grow. And here we are. I think, I think we've finally planted it in the right place. But she's got more tables down there and, and in her words, more of a beard garden atmosphere. Of course, it's a full-service restaurant, so it's family-friendly, but just an outdoor entertainment space.
Will the floor level be about the same level as Stone Cloud? Because Stone Cloud's quite a ways above grade also.
It is. So the floor level on the interior of the structure, no, will be a lot higher than Stone Cloud. And the patio that's built onto it will be much higher than Stone Cloud. The yard itself will remain at grade and it'll be at the same grade as Stone Cloud.
So you'll have ramps or stairs or something go down there then?
Yeah, those, those ramps and stairs that kind of disappear into nothingness, they are disappearing to the yard that will be at grade with the sidewalk in Stone Cloud.
Is there a service window into the Stone Cloud?
You know, despite my pushing very, very hard for it, no. And we all tried, and it really was just a function of how the, the space got designed. I think, and I've told Rachel this, Empire Slice is owned by Rachel Cope. I think that was a miss on her part, but she said, "I'm kind of interested in, in using drone delivery, so we may just fly drones with pizza over there." And I think she's actually serious. And she's a very creative entrepreneur, and so she has promised me that she will find a way to get pizza over there. But the way that, and I've been in the space recently, the way it's laid out is, is the bathrooms and the, and the bar are actually on the north wall. So there, and the kitchen is more towards the south and east. So there just really was not a convenient way to get there. And the problem with grade, the floor at Empire would be a reach up for the backyard of Stone Cloud.
They'd have to build a platform or something back there.
Yeah.
A dumbwaiter.
Well, okay.
Previously, these projects, Stone Cloud, Hatch, and Roundhouse, and TXMZ have all been considered major redevelopments under the TIFF. And I had asked for that on this one, and, and I don't know, I think there is, well, there's new membership on the TIFF Review Committee, and I also think that there's, it's an evolving document. And so, I think there were some questions as to whether it was, it qualified as it under what? And so, I was involved in the applications, of course, for the first three. And where I stand, and that's why I asked for what I asked for, and, but that's also why the TIFF Review Committee awarded what they awarded. And so you'll notice that there's a discrepancy between those two numbers. The discrepancy comes from whether or not it was a major redevelopment and qualifies or not. And so, ultimately, I think this body decides that. And so, my formal request is for what I applied for, but I also understand that the body is taking those things in a different direction, I will say. Also, it would be helpful from a developer's standpoint if we are changing what those things look like. Everybody is aware on the front end, because I also, again, made some assumptions in my capital arrangement based on what we have done historically. And so, you know, there's no upfront funding for TIFF anymore at all. So I have to come up with all of the funding for these things ahead of time. And TIFF funding is not something that any financial institution will lend on until you get into a major situation, in which case, they will lend on it, but they take about 45% of it. No, no doubt. And so, I haven't done any of that, but what this money allows me to do is to suppress the rent rate, to make it attractive to operators that are unfamiliar with Stillwater, who, as we've discussed previously, doesn't always pop very well on paper. We have one of the lowest median income, or household incomes in the state because we have about 20,000 kids who just don't show up on our income statement, and that skews our numbers downward. But regardless, as a developer, whenever I go talk to an operator, they all say the same thing. Well, I understand what you're telling me, but that doesn't, that doesn't track with what I'm seeing on paper. So there's an explanation for why I've asked for it to be a major development, how it fits into the timeliness overall, and, and glad to, again, answer any questions to clarify that, too.
Trustees, further questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Cory. Very, what's a, well, one quick question. When's this going to be open?
We're trying to get a fire line across the street currently, and that's going to have some impact. Parking is going to have some impact, but her, her date is, I think, mid-May. I've, I've tried to push her to get there before graduation. On the other hand, as somebody who just opened one of these, it might not be a good idea to open right around graduation. It may be a post-graduation.
Great, thank you.
I can provide you a few other details just on the process. The TIFF Committee, Implementation Policy Guide Committee, met on January 8th and January 29th, 2024, to review this application from progressive development. And the, as I said before, the application was for the 450,000, which is funding in arrears as there is no more upfront funding available for these projects. And the committee voted five to one with one abstention to approve the project for 18%, which is what they were considering a general project improvement category. So it's, has a 12% limit plus a 6% kicker, and they voted for, including that 6% additional increase to the project. So the general project improvement category in the Implementation Policy Guide specifies that that percentage of assistance be applied to the hard construction cost. So in this instance, the hard construction cost of 1.4 million, that 18% would be 252,000. There was discussion of that being applied to the total development costs, but the motion, the final motion that was made, excuse me, in the discussion of the committee, 395,000 was a number that was discussed, but when it came to the final motion, it was the 18% is what they voted to approve.
And that's based on the designation of it not being a significant, rather, versus being a significant improvement?
Yep. And then I think I also included in the packet chart, just kind of showing, it was, this was helpful for my own exercise, that every, almost every TIFF project that's been brought to the committee, Everyman, Campus Corner, Creamery, Hatch, Stone Cloud, TXMZ, were considered as significant impact projects, even though they were under that $4 million threshold. And, and in the project plan, it states clearly that it's under, over $4 million or meets multiple objectives of the project plan. So.
Was there any discussion about why the redevelopment as the TXMZ was considered major and not the redevelopment in the same location?
I think Cory hit on it some, that there's a new staff, or there's a new, there's some new members to the TIFF Committee that felt like this project needed to be considered as general improvement. That, that was raised. Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I mean, I, I will say a couple of things about, about this, you know, in the significant impact projects. You know, certainly over the life of this TIFF, not everything's always going to be a significant impact. And I think certainly the stuff that, the earlier it happened, the more significant it was, or the more significant it was going to be. I think for this, and so I would say, we definitely need to address the fact that not everything forever is going to be a significant impact. I do agree, though, with, with what the developer said about, we need to, if we're going to change that, we're going to have to change that before people actually are applying for things. It needs to be discussed ahead of time, especially on a project like this where the exact same building was previously approved as a significant impact. And I think, I mean, there's, there are several, certainly the expansion of downtown, you know, with the, the construction happening on Block 34, this being in, in close proximity to that. You know, the continued development of a, really a whole new downtown area that has not been, as Cory said, I mean, those, none of those buildings have ever generated any tax money for our community, and, and those are all, I think, significant. So I, I would certainly be in favor of treating this the same way TXMZ was going to be treated in this facility. But I, I also would say we need to address with the committee and with the project plan how we're going to, to define that significant project as we go forward. Because, yeah, I mean, just by the nature of the TIFF, as it continues to grow, each new project is, is less significant than the ones that came before it. I mean, that's just, that's just part of the deal. So I would be in favor of, of reaching a development agreement that treats this as a, as a significant impact project.
If I may, I just want to let council know that we have already started the discussion about doing a new implementation guide for, with the attorney group that we have worked with, with this TIFF, so we've already begun that process.
That's great. Yeah, the discussion, the Implementation Policy Guide Committee aligns with what you're saying. And, and we, we've, it's a goal to update our Implementation Policy Guide.
I mean, all of us that have been involved in this TIFF discussion for, I mean, going on six years when we first started talking about it, you know, the world has changed so much and, and, you know, we thought that we might get like one huge project at the very beginning, and then we've ended up with several smaller, but no less impactful projects that have come out of it. I, I mean, I think no one can look at downtown Stillwater and say this hasn't had a, a huge, huge impact on our ability to attract, attract these kinds of places. We would not have Hatch, we would not have Empire Slice, we wouldn't have Stone Cloud, we wouldn't have Everyman, the EM space without this, this. But it also, it changes and evolves over time, so we need to make sure we're, we're trying to keep up with how it should be applied. So for the perspective of this project, what do you need to recommend to us, Brady?
Well, as we, as a practice that we've done in the past, it would be guidance for the, the amount of assistance and the willingness to commit the two pennies of undedicated sales tax to the project. And then the motion tonight is to authorize staff to work within the developer to finalize a term sheet that we would bring back to you. And then the motion tonight is to authorize staff to work within the developer to finalize a term sheet that we would bring back to you.
Trustees, further questions, comments?
So just to be clear, because we do have a recommendation from the Implementation Policy Committee, if the trustees do want to proceed in a different direction, you'll need to direct staff. Right now, the recommendation was to award the maximum amount, the 18% for general project improvements. If you certainly want to find that this meets the criteria for significant impact development, you'll need to make that motion in second this evening so that staff can proceed with that financing, which the main difference there is that the award is applied to total development costs rather than just hard construction costs.
Do we need more information financially, like, in front of us to make that type of motion, or are we comfortable?
The project itself supports the TIF funding. It's just a matter of how much, what percentage of that we're willing to contribute back to the project.
Right.
Right? I mean, it supports the 22, 21% binding, it just.
Yeah.
I guess, do you have, I guess we have it in our packet, but the total, if it's, if the difference is it's being applied, instead of just to construction, it's being applied to the total development. So can you share, do you have those numbers in front of you, Brady?
Yes, I can, thank you. So the 18%, if we keep it at that percent that the, the policy committee recommended, and applied it to total development costs, that would be $395,500. If you, if it was 22%, the full max amount, it would be $483,000. But again, the developers asked for $450,000 of assistance, which falls in between those, it's about 20%.
So. Yeah. So, okay, well, just clarify for me. If it's treated as a significant impact project, let's just say as it was before, at least from your, your sheet, it shows that TM, XMZ was, was approved for 19.5% of a total development cost of 1.7, correct?
That's correct.
These percentages are all sort of different. I mean, it's clearly not set by a formula.
That's correct.
Are they set that way, they were set that way because of the, I assume, the requests and the actual dollar figures that worked out and all that sort of thing, right?
Correct. Yep, and so, that's exactly right, Mayor. So when those requests came in, and those just happened to be the amounts that were awarded, in order to get those amounts, they had to be considered as significant impact because they were more than the 12%. And, and they both applied to, all of those previously that are on that chart, applied to total development costs. None of those were factors of just the hard construction cost.
But the plan would allow us to apply it to either of those numbers, and it would allow us to apply a percentage somewhere between 12 and 22.
Yes, the project plan gives all authority to the seat of trustees first for whatever decision you want to make. Second, it, on the way the project plan is written, in each of those categories, it's up to that amount. So you have anywhere from, anywhere below 12% plus the 6% kicker on general project improvements, or the 22% plus 6% kicker for any project that is considered significant impact.
And the committee recommended 18% of hard construction costs, which is a total of?
$252,000.
Okay, okay.
And if we apply it to total construction, it's $395,000.
$395,000.
And so to get to the requested number, you'd have to up the percentage as well as apply it to.
It'd be, it'd be 20%.
I got you.
Mayor, I agree with you that changing this kind of in the midst of an application seems really challenging, listening to, to the developer talk about that. I think that's something for us, if we want people to continue to use this tool, I think we need to kind of honor our commitments and be really transparent with that. So my, but I also don't feel like, because of the, the way that percentage is determined and not sitting down with the TIF Committee to kind of understand exactly their thought process, my initial thought is that we maintain their percentage of 18%, but apply it to the total development so that we're still honoring our commitment of it at that location as a significant development. And hopefully, that's better.
I think that's a reasonable way to do this. I think the other option would be that we apply the same percentage that was applied to TXMZ in the first place, which was 19.5% of total development costs. Again, just based on the fact that in this case, I would, I would, I think it's completely reasonable that the developer would assume the same sort of deal would be available in, in a different restaurant coming into the spot. And so.
Mr. Williams, do you know how, is there very much difference in the total development costs between TXMZ and, I'm just thinking of like the significance of the, the actual development itself?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, TXMZ was closer to 2021, so you just had 2021 pricing.
Sure.
And they have, Empire Slice has programmed the entire yard. So none of those, there's no ability to monetize that 30-foot that was previously withdrawn. So most costs are, I think she's more realistic about her build-out numbers, and having just completed one, they look real to me. And then inflation.
Sure.
And to make the council feel a little bit better, Hatch was only 14.5%. And so like, of, of the overall scope of the project. So I appreciate anything that the council awards, but also just kind of wanted to throw that out there.
Sure.
I will also add that Corey has asked for the city through the infrastructure funds of the TIF III to help assist in the parking, the creation of parking around that area in our public right-of-way. And so that is an item that will be going to the TIF Committee at their next meeting, and ultimately to the trustees in the future as well. But that is from the infrastructure bucket, funding bucket of the TIF III project plan budget.
Well, then I, I mean, I assume that wouldn't be dedicated parking to these specific businesses.
No, 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 absolutely, public parking.
Which we need to create more of, no matter what.
Yep.
The Implementation Policy Guide does state, you know, these developments may be eligible for more than one category, and so the trustees may choose the one that's most beneficial. And by the applications itself for the financing, you can find that this one meets the criteria for the significant impact development, because it generates new employment and meets multiple plan objectives just on the face of the application itself, if that's helpful, councilor, trustees.
What do you guys want to do?
So if I make a motion. So we need, if we want to modify the recommendation of the TIF Committee, we would, what do, what do I need to include?
So an example for a motion would be motion to award significant impact development assistance in the amount of, you can say the percentage, and that would be applied to the total development costs. And by making that motion, you would also direct staff and council to bring back, to negotiate terms of a redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement would then come back for final approval.
You got that?
I think I tracked on that, you might have to help me. So I would like to make a motion to award significant development.
Significant impact.
Significant impact development to the project at the TIF Committee's recommended percentage of 18%.
Applied to total development costs.
Applied to the total development costs, because of the category of financing.
And direct staff and council to negotiate a redevelopment agreement.
Negotiate a redevelopment agreement.
It's a beautiful motion.
Thank you.
I will second that motion. Oh, I keep moving and seconding things, and I forget that I'm the one that's actually, you know, running the meeting.
I'll second it.
I would second.
I mean, I can second it, but we'll take yours, we'll take Councilor or Trustee Harden's second on this motion. Now that we have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that motion is approved, and we will look forward to seeing a redevelopment agreement and trying some pizza. Thank you. All right, that takes us to the end of this agenda, unless there are any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before we do, I'd like to make one comment about this redevelopment. You know, you talked about the early TIF was helping to get one big project. I'm looking here at one, two, three, four, five projects that total over $10 million. And diversification is not a bad thing, so I still think this is a good idea.
Absolutely, absolutely, agreed.
That's my piece.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Sita, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that is approved, and we are adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for February 26, 2024. Trustees, action, questions, comments on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Please pull item E.
Item E?
E, yes. No, 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 I'm sorry, no, 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 I'm looking at the wrong agenda. I wanted, yes, I was looking at the City Council. D, please pull item D.
Item D, so would you like to?
Motion to approve the consent docket minus item D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent minus item D, please vote. Vote of four to zero, consent agenda minus items D is approved. We'll move to that item on the consent docket. Trustee Harden?
Yes, Mr. Smith, I just had a question about that. I was struggling why we have to have $129,000 engineering services for pole replacement.
You bet.
Enlighten me, please.
Good evening, trustees, Lauren Smith, electric utility director, and I'd be happy to provide you an answer. I have up on the screen, if we can, if you can see, I'd like to give you some visuals here. The, the two structures that we're talking about, this one and this one here.
The big tall ones?
Oh, you can't see the mouse. Okay, to the left, you see the tall structure, and then right there, to the right of the distribution, distribution pole there, can't see the mouse. So that could be problematic, but these are two very unique structures. There are only two of them in our system. Both structures are dead-end structures that have to support full line tension from, from different directions. The existing structures were custom engineered for this location. There is no documentation of the existing design, which will require a LiDAR scan, which is basically, in short words, a 3D scan, aerial scan that shows us height and dimensions of conductor and, and all that good stuff. I had a couple pictures up here that have been gone, let me see if I can, yeah, there are. This kind of is the money shot. These structures were built with atypical materials. They're made out of laminate wood, which is very unique. And we believe it was due to steel shortage when they were put in, in the mid-'90s. But they're, they're pre-engineered foundations, drill-pierced shaft foundations with concrete bases. And one of the, the atypical things that we're seeing here is that we're, we're trying to thread a needle here. We're, we're trying to run underneath OGNES 138 line, over our 1247 lines, and then on the other side of the street, you can't see it because you can't see my pointer, but we're dodging two underbuilt circuits on our 69 line. So it's a very complex structure. The above-grade structures have been designed in an atypical horizontal configuration to support line tension. The concrete foundations have to be designed to accommodate these loads based on a geotechnical survey. Beyond the structural and concrete design, this agreement includes a survey, a LiDAR scan, geotechnical survey, procurement support, and construction report, support. These are all necessary to, to safely replace these critical pieces of infrastructure.
And why replace them?
Yeah, so our recent wooden pole testing that we've been doing on our system, these two were tested, and they are rotten to the core.
Okay.
So.
All right.
They need to be replaced.
Is there a motion on the item?
Motion to approve item D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item D from the consent docket, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve with a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Lauren. My dad was a distribution power engineer to build these lines for a long time. And so that, that took me back to family vacations where he would point these things out when driving by. You know, that's a laminated pole.
All I heard was replacing poles, like, what's the big deal?
Uh, there's nothing else on this agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene this Stillwater City Council meeting. We're at item 13 on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the reason requested by the city attorney?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now be in executive session. And we're back. Is there a motion to reconvene in regular session?
Motion to reconvene? Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Stillwater City Council will return to regular session. Ms. Carley, did you have recommendations?
Yes, I recommend a motion to withdraw the exclusion to opt out of the settlements and that the city participates in the 3M and DuPont settlements.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation? Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. Any further action from executive session? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn City Council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.
We are adjourned.